Good evening, everyone. I call this regular city council meeting to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Elliott?
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Sandal?
Here.
Councilmember Rogie is absent this evening, and Mayor Guttell?
Here. We have a couple of people for the open forum. I'd like to ask that when I call you up to come up to the microphone over there to speak, and there's also a tablet where you're asked to sign in, and that you would keep your comments to about three minutes, and we would have sufficient time for the next group to also come forward. So first, I would like to call the Hurleys up. Would you please come up to the podium? To the mic, please, over here where we can hear you, because it's a... Otherwise, we won't be able to hear you, Mr. Hurley. Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to defer talking now until after you have your session on the fourteenth subject that is on your menu.
On item fourteen?
Item fourteen.
You went away to the end to have your discussion. We have forum discussion at the end of this council meeting as well. We can certainly do that if that's what you would like.
Very good. Appreciate it.
Okay. And then, Gernbacher?
And I am here to talk about the seventeenth...
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Patricia Gernbacher. I'm here to talk about the Seventeenth Avenue Development.
Okay.
Is this the correct time, or is there a better time to talk about it?
No, you can talk about it now as well, about three minutes.
Okay. Okay, I am...I wanted to introduce you to my mom and dad. They are eighty-nine years old, and they have been living in their home for sixty years now. So they were one of the original residents of the block. And when they moved to...into their home, it was just farmland. And it's my understanding that the road project would not impact their home. The road project can be developed without having to have their home...without...while my parents could remain in their home. I just...the dimensions of the street are the same, so it would make no difference if their home was there or not. I also just hope that the council will consider that it's the middle of winter, and that I don't really expect that people would be displaced in winter. I think that...well, I know that tenants can't be evicted in winter, and I also know that the power company cannot turn off your power during winter. So I would think that the city would take that into consideration. So I am here asking you to extend the...I guess, extend the likelihood that my parents will be able to remain in their home. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And would you sign in? Did you sign in on the...
I did.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Staff want to make any...
I'm just going to make a quick comment here.
Mayor, members of the council, this item is one of the items we're going to go into closed session about. I'll be having some topic...this subject, I'm going to bring up something before we go into closed session that addresses some of what she's referring to there, but I'd like to defer and go through it at that time if we can.
Maybe that will make everything a little bit more clearer for you folks. Thank you for coming tonight. At this time, I'd like everybody to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance up here. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the next, I would like to ask the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November twenty-seventh, 2012, and the special city council meeting of December fourth, 2012.
So moved.
Second. Any other further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have council discussion. First off, we have the schedule of the city council...special city council meeting for the advisory commission interviews. These are the commissions, so if you're interested in serving, there's lots of openings on our commissions. Please go up online or stop by City Hall and grab an application. This is not an onerous thing to serve on a commission. You're requested to show up, if you can, at most meetings, once a month, and maybe a couple of other open houses or something like that, depending on which commission you choose to be on. But there's a lot of variety of things to do to serve your community, and we would really appreciate those people who would take a few extra hours out of your day to go up online and look at those commissions. Before us, I believe there was one Monday and two Saturdays that worked when it finally came down to looking at all of our calendars. So does any one have a recommendation of how we want to do it? Do we want to do it Saturday morning, or do we want to do that Monday? Would you give us the dates again, please? Do you have the Monday and the two Saturdays with you, Cheryl? Can look at my calendar.
Monday, the fourteenth.
It was Monday, the fourteenth, and then the two Saturdays were...twelfth and nineteenth. Counsel?
I prefer the fourteenth, but...
See, Monday, the fourteenth, is open. The Saturday, the nineteenth, is a League of Women Voters meeting that morning.
Okay, so it would be the twelfth or the fourteenth?
My preference is Saturday morning, but I'm flexible. I can do whatever everybody else wants to do.
I can do Saturday morning, the twelfth, provided it doesn't go past noon.
Well, it doesn't ever. We always do them in the morning.
I can yield to the twelfth if I have to.
Can you yield to the twelfth? I would bring...I would propose that if you guys do Saturday mornings, I've always liked Saturday mornings myself, that I will bring the treats, coffee and juice.
Remember, we're Dewtown.
Yep, I'll bring fresh fruit. Okay, so it is...
What kind of treats can you bring?
I know. Healthy food.
Good.
Healthy food. Okay, so it is Saturday, the twelfth. So if you have signed up for a commission, or you are going to be in a commission again, and you need to come in for an interview, you will get a call from the city arranging a time for you to do it on that Saturday. We always have a few people who can't make that date, and then we do a few of them before council meetings, so.
Do we have a time, nine, eight-thirty?
I don't know. How many do we have, and how much time do we need, Cheryl? We don't have a lot? More applicants. We could use a lot more applicants, okay. We need a lot more people. Want to start at nine? Yeah. And we won't go past noon. Okay. Nine to noon. And if we might not even need to go to noon. Okay. January twelfth, nineteen to noon. Okay. And then we have Hats Off to Hometown Hits, if you don't mind me opening this up with a regular annual event that we have. I am still on the board of the Richfield Foundation, and I so love this community foundation. It's such a great thing that we do, and we give out grants. This is the most fun we ever have, when you get to give the money away. And it's also the saddest, because we always get way more asks for money than we can ever distribute out. So the Richfield Foundation supports your Richfield community. It's not a part of the city, but this is a great venue for them to give out their grant awards. So I'll invite the chair to come up to the mic and do the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. I appreciate your hospitality this evening. I'd like to ask you, Madam Mayor, to come and join me, and you, Mr. City Manager, to come and join me, because you are a member of the board. And we also...I'd like to ask those that are also here on the board to come up, too. Gordon Hanson, who's the vice chair, Scott Vistus, Joan Kraft, Susan Rosenberg, who's our secretary. And are there any other members of the board here that I didn't notice? We have fourteen members. The Richfield Foundation was formed in 1990. We have an endowment of a little over a couple hundred thousand dollars. We've given over a hundred fifty thousand dollars to various causes and needs in the city of Richfield. It's our community's foundation. And I just want to tell you that it broadened its scope this year. It's had sometimes narrower scopes, sometimes wider scopes, but we have now got a scope that supports successful kids, secure families, and a strong community. And we want to thank everyone that does support the foundation and the city for the backing and the support that we get from the city. It was begun by members of the city council and the city manager back in 1990, and we've always enjoyed that kind of support. In fact, this building right here is our official office address. So with that, I want to tell you that we're going to be giving out grants of eleven thousand two hundred dollars tonight, and I'm going to begin calling people up here to receive your checks. If you would just tell people just very briefly what it is that the grant is for when you come and how it has to do with Richfield, then we'll give you a check if you're willing to do that. And then, when you are finished listening to these good causes, I want you to know that you can support the Richfield Foundation by going online to www.richfieldfoundationmn.org, And with that, let's begin by giving out some checks. Susan, you have the checks. The first recipient is Cornerstone Advocacy Services for two thousand dollars.
So my name is Melissa, and I'm the supervisor in our shelter at Cornerstone Advocacy Services. Our shelter is located...and our office is located in Bloomington, but we do a lot of work with Richfield clients and in this community and in the schools, and we're really excited to get this grant. It's going to actually allow us to translate a number of our materials, both for our community programs as well as in our shelter, into Spanish for our clients who are Spanish-speaking. So thank you very much.
You did a great job.
The next organization is Oasis for Youth for a thousand dollars.
I am Leslie Stiles with Oasis, and we are an organization that is located in Bloomington, but we serve Bloomington, Richfield, and Edina. A good number of our youth are from Richfield. And we serve young people. Our thrust is making kids successful, homeless and precariously housed youth. And we are going to use this grant to help kids with transportation. It's a big challenge for kids in unstable situations in the suburbs, so we help with bus tokens, bus cards. We help with perhaps cub cards to, you know, help with food at the end of the month. We can help with small target cards, just things to get them over the hump and make things a little bit easier for young people experiencing homelessness. So this will help us a lot. Thank you.
I better get the check away from Susan for this next one. This one is Loaves and Fishes, and she did not get to vote on this grant, but this is Susan.
Well, I'm accepting for Loaves and Fishes. As you may know, Loaves and Fishes has just celebrated their thirtieth year. We serve fifteen hundred guests every night at ten dining sites. And we do have a site here in Richfield at Hope Presbyterian, and really proud that one of our teams that serve here is the Richfield employees, and they work really hard. I'm really happy to have them at Hope. And the money that we get will be used for the Richfield site. Thank you.
This is two thousand dollars. The next is Fraser, and that is a thousand dollars.
Good evening. My name is DeeDee Stevens-Neal, and I'm the director of Fraser School that's here in Richfield. We serve young children. About one-third of our children have special needs, and about two-thirds are typically developing. And this thousand dollars is going to help us. We are looking at building a new playground, and so we've worked with a volunteer group of architects, landscape architects, who have a conceptual design, but we need to have a survey, and we need to have the actual design that a contractor can use. So this thousand dollars will help us toward that. Thank you.
One of the quintessential things about Richfield is that every sixth grader gets to go somewhere when they are on a special nature tour, and the next grant is to the Richfield ELC fund.
Well, thank you. My name is Deborah Buss, and I'm a sixth grade teacher at Richfield Middle School, and also the coordinator of the ELC program. And as was mentioned, one of the monumental things in Richfield Public Schools is being able to go on your environmental learning trip. So with this money, as needs of our families grow and the different socioeconomic challenges that we're all facing, this will help with both equipment and tuition and helping us be able to maintain the trip and try to be as self-supporting as possible, being that it's a...it's really...even though it's through the school, we have always maintained as much independence as what we could financially, so this will help significantly. So thank you.
The next one is also Richfield Public Schools, the Transitions Program.
Hello, I'm Marissa Zimmerman, and I'm the school social worker, both at the Richfield Transition Programs as well as the Richfield High School. And this grant will go towards a curriculum for the eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds with disabilities in the transition program. I teach social skills, and this is a social boundaries curriculum that teaches students how to touch and talk and trust different people. So we're very happy. Thank you.
And the next one for fifteen hundred dollars is MIRA. You can tell us what MIRA is.
MIRA is actually an acronym for an outreach program for Latinos in our community. We do things such as teach computer skills to people who are coming to our community and do not have them. We also help people learn to read their leases correctly, and sort of other programs from health issues and concerns to schools. I am Kathy Louby, the treasurer for MIRA, and we operate out of the Central School in a little office there that has been provided through Richfield Public Schools. And we thank you very much for the grant, and it will help us continue our efforts in our Latino community. Thank you.
And the final grant tonight is for a thousand dollars for the Richfield Public Schools Dual Language School.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sandra Velazquez, and I'm with Richfield Dual Language, and I'm here in behalf of Señora Martha Chasovan, our principal. I work in the library, and so I have an understanding that this money is going to go towards some new literature, and I think specifically it's going to be literature in Spanish, which we kind of have a hard time getting our hands on for our students. So this will help students that are native Spanish speakers, and also students that are learning Spanish at our school. So really excited, and thank you very much.
I want to thank all of the wonderful organizations that are doing this kind of work in our community, too, and we're happy to be able to support them. And thank you again for your hospitality.
You know, that gives us a chance to see what's all going on in our community and how many needs there are. Those are just the grants that were awarded, not all of them that we got. So there's a lot of really great things going on in our community. So thank you. This is community...this is discussion, and hats off to Hometown Hits. Councilmember Elliott, do you have anything to report?
You know, just a couple things. Just about every year, I think, the public works, and Mike Eastland get accolades for the manner in which they keep our streets clear. And I think, once again, I'm going to repeat what's been said over the last many years. I had an opportunity today, I think I had five or six different people come into the office for various things. Some from the south, Burnsville and Lakeville, and some from south Minneapolis. To a person, everyone, once they got into Richfield and hit the streets, couldn't believe how easy it was to navigate. They said getting out of south Minneapolis on the side streets was impossible, and the southern suburbs weren't much better. So once again, it happens every year, but I think it's an accolade to the city that we can navigate and get around our city so well, and I thank the staff for the work they do. And then, I think after tonight, we shut it down pretty much until after the first of the year, so I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe holidays. Thank you.
Councilmember? Thank you. Could you put this up on the overhead?
I apologize for the wrinkled flyer, but I think you can probably get it online if you are interested in having your own. It's a flyer that the Arts Commission puts out to give us information about places that you can see Richfield's talents. All of the artists that are listed include...there we go. So we have a pottery display in this building at the City Municipal Center by student...Richfield students that is on display. We also have a display at the Richfield Community Center by the former director of the Richfield Community Arts Commission, Ron Wilson. Judy Dodds is doing inspirational planning at...excuse me, inspirational exhibit of her calligraphy work at Hope Church. There's also a teen art show at Augsburg Library. So wherever you go in the community, look out for all of these great artists. It always surprises me to know we have so many in Richfield. So thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had our Beyond the Elder Ruin meeting last night. Talked about the things we're doing, and one of the important things we're going to be helping with is this Saturday, December fifteenth. We do wreaths across America at Fort Snelling. The event starts at eleven o'clock, and what we do is, in honor of the veterans and the upcoming holidays, we honor them by putting wreaths on the graves out there. A lot of these sections are so old, nobody ever comes and visits them anymore, and so there's no decoration in that. So every year, we have a group that goes out there, and wreaths across America is nationwide. It started in Arlington, and we've decided to help sponsor Fort Snelling, so part of our group will be out there on Saturday putting wreaths out. We have a program where we talk about the different branches of services and that to remember them, so.
Yeah, that's very nice, yeah, to be thinking about those who no longer have even family around. Yeah, or who can't get out here. They're in a different part of the world, yeah. It's wonderful. The other thing is, is we had a study session, and I know a lot of people have been very, very curious, so at least we have the ability to announce tonight that the Lindell Garden site seems to be moving forward, and that there was a signed agreement with Lake Winds Cooperative. That's a grocery store, and so we're looking forward to seeing what they come up with in the next few months as they move forward and that. So that was very enlightening. So those of you who went to this Festival of Lights and everything, and visited there this summer maybe for their farmer's market, they are finally moving forward, and they also are moving forward on their housing plan. So I think come this spring, we might see some movement on that site. So that's exciting news. And then, I believe we would like to have Todd Sandel is going to make a quick announcement about some very encouraging news to us.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm pleased to announce that we just completed our second phase of alcohol compliance checks of all thirty-three businesses in the city of Richfield that have alcohol license, and all passed.
Oh, wow.
So we had no failures, and I think that's a hats off to the council and our hard stance against serving or providing alcohol to minors, and the public education that we do every day about alcohol and minors, so thank you.
Well, I want to thank those businesses, too. I know sometimes it's very difficult, and they have employees that are difficult to work with who don't get this, and they work very hard at that. So kudos to them, businesses, but thanks to the staff, too, for all the help. That's great. I would ask for council, then, to approve the agenda with one caveat, that we move the Consent Calendar number three D to number four. So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion or changes? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Does oppose? Motion carries. We have a very long consent calendar, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, tonight, we have a very long consent calendar. And for those in the audience and those at home, I'll remind them that the consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once that consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further action on those items would be necessary. All right, so I'll start in with this very long consent calendar. Item A is consideration of approval of a resolution appointing Abisola Amawade of Candlewood Suites, Raj Bhakta of American Inn, and Adam Selby of Hampton Inn to the Richfield Tourism Promotion Board for a three-year term each, ending December thirty-first, 2015. Item B is consideration of approval of resolution granting conditional use permit for a traditional Class II restaurant at eight-eleven sixty-sixth Street East. Item C is consideration of approval of confirming the city manager's reappointment of Connie Murray and Paul Wasco for two-year terms as hearing examiners. Item D has been pulled. Item E is consideration of approval of transfer of assets to closeout funds that are part of the Interstate Lindell-Nicolat or ILN Tax Increment District. Item F is consideration of approval of hiring SEH Incorporated for development of utility reconstruction analysis or future reconstruction of the city sanitary and water utilities along Hennepin County roads at a cost not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Item G is consideration of approval of resolution granting site plan approval for daycare serving up to five persons at sixty-six thirty Penn Avenue. Item H is consideration of approval of resolution granting site plan approval for daycare serving up to twenty-eight persons at sixty-three forty-one Penn Avenue. Item I is consideration of approval of authorizing city of Richfield to enter into contract number A one-two-one-two-three-four with Hennepin County for sentencing-to-serv program, services not to exceed fifty-two thousand, four hundred, sixty-two dollars and eighty cents in 2013, and not to exceed fifty-four thousand, thirty-eight dollars and forty cents in 2014. All right, item I is consideration...J, I'm sorry, consideration of approval of contract with Graymont LLC Company for purchase of fourteen hundred...fourteen hundred tons of Quicklime for water treatment in the amount of two hundred thousand, two hundred dollars, or a hundred forty-three dollars a ton for 2013. Item K is consideration of approval of resolution authorizing city of Richfield to enter into an agreement with state of Minnesota Office of State Court Administration to access Minnesota data services. Consideration of approval of resolution authorizing Richfield Public Safety's acceptance of a three thousand dollar grant from Target Corporation, five hundred dollar grant from Modern Manufacturing and Engineering Incorporated, a two hundred dollar donation from Broadway Pizza, and personal donations of two hundred fifty dollars, one hundred fifty dollars, and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. M is consideration of approval of resolution authorizing acceptance of five thousand, nine hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents in a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, for the purchase of bulletproof vests for Richfield Police. Item N is consideration of approval of resolution authorizing Public Safety Department Police Acceptance of one hundred dollar donation from the Alaris Mortgage Firm. Item O is consideration of approval of resolutions amending the 2012, 2013 labor agreements with nine-one-one dispatchers, LLS Local twenty...I'm sorry, 225, police officers and detectives, LELS Local one-twenty-three, and police supervisors, LEL Local one-sixty-two. Item P is consideration of approval of 2013 renewal of named business licenses for on-sale and off-sale 3.2 percent malt liquor establishments, taxi companies, and rental of trailers and trucks doing business in Richfield. And we'll start with licenses sell 3.2 percent malt liquor. The first is Aldi Foods off sale, El Jalapeno off sale, Portland Food Mart off sale, Rainbow Foods off sale, Richfield U.S. Gas Station off sale, Sandy's Tavern on sale, SuperAmerica Stations forty-one eighty-six, forty-one eighty-eight, forty-one ninety-one, and forty-one ninety-one, and forty-six fifteen, all off-sale. Target Corporation off-sale, Vina Restaurant on sale. Licensed to operate in Richfield, now these would be taxi, uh, services. A New Star Taxi and Limousine Service, five vehicles, Airport Taxi, eleven vehicles, American Travel, five vehicles, Continental Taxi LLC, five vehicles, Gold Star Taxi, eight vehicles, Latino American Express, eight vehicles, Latino Express, ten vehicles, Suburban Taxi, five vehicles, uh, Twin Cities Airport Taxi, five vehicles, White Star Taxi, three vehicles. And then we have Paul's Rentals and Sales, trailer and truck rental. And that concludes the consent calendar. I would also say that in, uh, in pulling three D, if for some reason that were not gonna be approved, it would affect three E.
Oh, it's not, it's not about, it's a discussion point.
It's just a discussion point, so then we're fine.
Yeah, okay, so I will, I will move this consent calendar.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Does oppose? The motion carries. Councilmember Sandel?
Thank you. Um, I pulled, uh, item number three D off just because I think we oughta pat prior city council members on the back for what they did way back in nineteen eighty-five. This is a motion to adopt a resolution to decertify the Interstate Lindell-Nicholat Tax Increment Financing District. And sometimes the public thinks it's, it's just taxes, and we should never do TIF, as it's called, because we'll never see the end of it. And this is just another example that, yes, someday we will see the end of it. This one was established in nineteen eighty-five, and the area included the former Hampton Inn, what is now the Four Points Sheridan, the shops at Lindell, Meridian Crossings, which is at the intersection of, um, thirty-five W and four ninety-four, and the Candlewood Hotel. And all of those were built through the use of TIF, because without the TIF, there would not have been enough funds to clear the land and to, um, develop the sites. What people don't necessarily understand is that when the TIF district is decertified, that it brings online a lot more dollars into the city coffers. Um, it is estimated that the taxing jurisdictions, including the county, the city, and the school district, will receive an increase of approximately one-point-six million dollars just next year and thereafter. So that's a huge increase for all of those districts, including the school and the city. Specifically, right now, the city receives a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars from the ILN district. And after decertification, that tax revenue will increase by another seven-hundred-nine thousand dollars. So that's a huge benefit to the city. It's also a benefit because we now have those businesses and those much newer and nicer buildings in place in the city. So I certainly wanna approve it, but I just wanna let the public know that sometimes TIF pays off, and certainly in Richfield it does.
Motion?
I will move that we adopt the attached resolution to decertify the Interstate Lindell-Nicholat Tax Increment Financing District.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Councilmember Fitz Henry, I have you up on the document next.
You do, Madam Mayor, thank you. Uh, this is, uh, item number five on the agenda. It's a second reading and summary publication of an amendment to the Richfield City Code, Appendix D. Uh, city staff conducts an annual review of Richfield City Code Appendix D, which establishes certain fees related to building permits and fees, land use application fees, and fire service fees. The intent is to ensure that fees charged for the city services reflect actual staff cost incurred in providing those services without being monorous or excessive. Staff is recommended that the fee be added for issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy and extension of land use approvals. A fair amount of staff time is incurred in granting these, uh, the issuance of temporary certificate of occupancy. The time is spent ensuring the essential life safety items are addressed before allowing the building to be temporarily occupied, and in developing a punch list of outstanding items and monitoring completion of those items. The proposed fee is two hundred dollars plus a letter of credit or cash escrow equal to a hundred and twenty-five percent of the remaining city code requirements. In the event that the property or business owner obtains a land use approval but does not actually begin work on their project before the approval expires, which is typically one year following the city council or similar action, staff must bring the approval back to the policymakers for an extension. There is staff time involved in research and any changes in the law, policy, or proposals that have occurred since the original approval, and in writing staff reports and attending meetings related to the extension. The proposed land use extension fee is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Staff is suggesting that the existing variance extension fee, seventy-five dollars, be eliminated, and that the newly proposed fee apply to variances as well as other land use approval extensions. The only other proposed fee revision being proposed for Appendix D are to rescind a ten-percent plan review fee for plumbing permit or HVAC permits for jobs in excess of fifty thousand. These fees were specifically required by the contract for those, for services with the city of Bloomington. For that work, Richfield's city staff now does in-house. So what I'd like to do is make the, uh, a motion that we approve the attached ordinance amendment to the Richfield City Code Appendix D, and that we approve the attached resolution authorizing summary publication of the ordinance amending Richfield City Code Appendix D.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Does oppose? Motion carries. Councilmember Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Madam Mayor, before we leave that sub, can I just make one comment?
Oh, please.
You noticed that we had a fee reduction here, and I,
Yes.
Uh, I just wanna say that, you know, for, for the past many years, we had contracted some of those inspection services from Bloomington.
Yes, that's correct.
And we had been getting some pretty stiff increases from the city of Bloomington. And what they were proposing for the past, for, uh, budget year for two thousand and twelve was, um, more than John and I thought we could ever accept. And so we canceled that contract, and we hired our own person. You would typically would think that when two governments work together, uh, there would be a cost savings. What's interesting is, after we went out on our own, uh, we're saving at least twenty thousand dollars a year by doing it ourself, and, and are able to, you know, decrease the fee that we had.
And not only are we saving the money, uh, but we also have an additional inspector on staff that, uh, you know, at times when there aren't those electrical or HVAC-specific permits that they're attending to, they're able to help out in, in other, uh, inspections as well. So it really is a win-win for the department.
That's wonderful.
Just thought I'd pass that along.
I know we review these things, but that's really good to hear, when we're saving money. I always love that. Councilmember Elliott?
Thank you. This is item for consideration is a public hearing for the consideration of the renewal of the two-thousand Pawn Breaker and Secondhand Goods Dealers License for Metro Pawn and Gun, Inc., seventy-five twenty-nine Lindell Avenue South. Um, on November seventh, two thousand and twelve, the city received the application and other required documents for Pawn Broker and Secondhand Good Dealer Licenses for Metro Pawn and Gun. This agenda item is the first request out of two of the, for the renewal of Pawn Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealers Licenses. If no council member objects, um, we may conduct this, a single public hearing for all of the license approvals and may pass all the resolutions with a single motion. If a, if a single individual public hearing is called for, the mayor should require each speaker to identify the particular license to which that person is speaking. Any council member may request that the question be divided if the council member wishes to address any one or all of the proposed resolutions by a separate motion. So I would defer to the council if we should combine them.
One hearing is fine.
One is fine, yeah.
With that being said, what I will do is go through the requirements for each of them, and then the mayor can call for a public hearing on each. Um, the, this applicant, Metro Pawn and Gun, uh, has satisfied the following requirements for issuance of a license. The required license fees have been paid, real estate taxes are not delinquent, the five-thousand-dollar bond has been submitted, and the environmental health staff has received no complaints regarding Metro Pawn and Gun in the previous year. A public safety background investigation has also been completed. The results of the investigation are summarized in an attachment to this report, none of which raise any concerns. Um, none of the information in the report shows any cause for recommending denial of the requested license. Uh, the Pawn Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealer License will expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. The second license that will be combined is pub, is the, uh,
University Cash Company.
Wait a minute, jumped ahead too far. The sub, the second, just gotta page through this. The second, uh, license renewal for the two thousand and thirteen Pawn Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealer Licenses for University Cash Company LLC, DBA, A- Avi's Pawn and Jewelry, sixty-four fourteen Nicollet Avenue South. In regards to Avi's Pawn and Jewelry, uh, it's been shown that the applicant has satisfied the following requirements. The required license fees have been paid, real estate taxes are not delinquent, the five-thousand-dollar bond has been submitted, and environmental health staff has received no complaints regarding Avi's Pawn and Jewelry in the previous year. In addition, the public background investigation has been completed, and the results, uh, are summarized in the attachment to this report and show no cause for recommending denial of the requested license. The Pawn Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealer License will expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve also. That being said, this is a public hearing, if the mayor wants to so-call it.
This is a public hearing, would anyone like to come to speak specifically on these businesses? Please come up and state your name and your address, and which of the licenses you are addressing.
Uh, good evening, my name is Mark Nichols, I'm the applicant for, uh, Metro Pawn and Gun, I'm the owner, and, um, I don't really have a statement to make, I just like to annually come up, 'cause the council changes over, and I didn't realize the Director of Public Safety changes over. You know, I'd like people to know who I am.
They do retire now and then.
I'd like people to know who I am, in case, uh, some, some incident should come up, and you'd wanna talk to me. At least, you know, we've seen each other, and you know who I am, so, uh, I'll answer any questions, and I just basically want to, you know, introduce myself and new council members, and to the new director of public, or new to me, I'm sorry. I, you could've been at it for a while, I, I was unaware of it. But I have no statement to make, but I will answer any questions that you have concerning my license.
Okay. Any questions?
I have none.
No, I don't think we have any questions, but thank you for coming and doing that and introducing yourself. Appreciate that a lot.
You're welcome, thank you.
The public hearing is still open, would anyone else like to come forward? I'll entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Does oppose? The public hearing is closed.
At this time, Mayor, I would move the council to approve the renewal of the two thousand and thirteen Pawn Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealer Licenses for Metro Pawn and Gun, Inc., seventy-five twenty-nine Lindell Avenue South, and also for the approval of the renewal of the two thousand and thirteen Pawn Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealer License for University Cash Company LLC, DBA Avi's Pawn and Jewelry, sixty-four fourteen Nicollet Avenue South.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
As oppose? Passed, thank you. And I have the next item. This is a public hearing for the consideration of the renewal of the two thousand and thirteen Club On Sale and Sunday Liquor License for Fred Babcock Post, doing business as of the, five, uh, four nickels, food and drink, at sixty-seven fifteen Lakeshore Drive. And if nobody else minds, I will do both of these together as well. So this is, again, a public hearing for consideration of the renewal of the two thousand and thirteen Club On Sale and Liquor License for Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion Post, four thirty-five, at sixty-five oh one Portland Avenue South. Um, on November seventh, two thousand and twelve, the city received the application for other required documents for the Club On Sale and Sunday Liquor License for Fred Babcock, VFW Post five-five-five. Um, and, uh, the important information, the agenda item is a first request out of two for the renewal of Club of On Sale. The remaining one, if there's no objections, we're gonna do this together as a, as a public hearing. The applicant has satisfied the following requirements of issuance. The required license fees are paid, real estate taxes are paid in current. Proof of liquor liability insurance coverage has been received, showing Integrity Mutual Company, excuse me, affording coverage, workers' compensation insurance has also been supplied. An accountant's statement has been prepared and submitted. This statement covers the period from October two thousand and eleven through September twenty-twelve, and indicates that food sales accounted for forty-seven-point-two percent of the total sales, while liquor accounted for forty-nine-point-four-five percent of the total sales. Miscellaneous sales accounted for three-point-three-five percent of the total sales. The VFW is exempt from meeting the code requirement that states that more than fifty percent of the business activities must be related to the service of food due to the fact that they are a club veterans' organization. Environmental health staff has received no complaints regarding Fred Babcock VFW Post, four nickels, for the previous year. The public safety background investigation has been completed. The results of the investigation are summarized in an attachment to this report. None of the information in the report shows any cause for recommendation of denial of this. And then moving on to the American Legion. The applicant has satisfied the following requirements. The required license fee has been paid, real estate taxes were paid current. Proof of liquor liability insurance coverage has been received, showing Integrity Mutual Insurance Company affording coverage. Workers' compensation insurance has been supplied. An accountant's statement has been prepared and submitted. This statement covers the period of October two thousand and eleven through September twenty-twelve, and indicates that food sales accounted for twenty-two-point-nine percent of the total sales, while liquor accounted for seventy-seven-point-one percent of the total sales. The Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion is exempt from meeting the code requirement that states more than fifty percent of the business activities must be related to the service of food due to the fact that they are a club veterans' organization. The environmental health staff has received no complaints regarding the Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion for the previous year. The public safety background investigation has been completed. The results of the investigation are summarized in the attachment to this report. None of the information in the report shows any cause for recommending denial of the requested license. Both these clubs, um, On Sale and Sunday Liquor License will expire, uh, December thirty-first. So at this time, I will open the public hearing for anyone who would like to come speak, either on, uh, with regards to the VFW or the American Legion. Anyone come forward at all to speak?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second. Um, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Does oppose? Motion carries. So I ask for the, the council's approval of the renewal of the two thousand and thirteen Club On Sale and Sunday Liquor License for Fred Babcock VFW Post five-five-five, Inc., doing business as four nickels, food and drink, sixty-seven fifteen Lakeshore Drive, and, approve the renewal of the two thousand and thirteen Club On Sale and Sunday Liquor License for Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion Post, four thirty-five, at sixty-five oh one Portland Avenue South.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Please.
Um, maybe for the director, uh, why are we still requiring the fifty percent on the food and alcohol when we, we know the service clubs don't need it? And I have a suspicion, not confirmed, that we got a lot of pork chops in the bottle, from some of the other businesses that are predominantly bars. Uh, since we're basing most of our licenses on police calls, and our attitude, why do we have to have that fifty percent food and? I don't have an answer for you. I would have to look into that.
'Cause I would, might suggest that since we have two non-compliance, I mean, I know they're exempt, but I do hear it from other places that they, they never can comply. Why should the other places have to comply when they're predominantly bars? So that's just a suggestion I throw out, whether that is a requirement we wanna keep, since we're basing it on police calls.
I can comment if I can, 'cause I'm doing the next one, which is all of the other ones. Um, and all of them meet the fifty percent requirement.
Correct.
Yeah, but I, like I said, my suspicion is that there, there may be a little, a couple pork chops in a bottle. But it, it, for their accounting purposes, they spend a lot of money in accounting to make sure they do that. And if it's not a real big issue as far as the license, I'm wondering why we keep it.
I wonder if the city manager, just, uh, uh, sitting here, can talk to us about that. Um, and this is, this is regarding the fifty percent requirement that we have for food, when they also serve alcohol. Can, do you have the history on that, city manager?
Well, um, no, not specifically, but I know it's a very common requirement, uh, in other cities, that there's a, you know, that there's a, um, a percentage share for food. I think, my recollection of, uh, of some of those going back, and it's, and some of this was before my time. But I, I'm quite sure what they were looking at was making- quite sure what they were looking at was making sure that we had liquor establishments in Ridgefield that were of a quality where it was a restaurant, you know, with a restaurant and a liquor-serving establishment and not something that just focused on selling liquor. And, you know, again, looking back many years in Ridgefield, Ridgefield was very, very careful and conservative about giving out liquor licenses. And I think some of that has its roots back in that timeframe as well. But it was a protection. It was a protection for the city so that the liquor establishments that were going to be in the community were ones that were of a quality that the city council at that time wanted and the community wanted that focused on food sales.
Well, I think it encourages restaurants.
Yes. I don't know, city attorney, if you have any other?
That is a requirement that is not in state statute. It's a local requirement within your authority. If you wanted to change it, you could. The city manager has correctly identified why cities typically want requirements like that or place requirements like that in their codes. It is to ensure that basically they don't load up with a bunch of bars and that they have restaurants that are predominantly serving food. Historically, the city also used to have a provision that required a minimum capital value of the property, property and improvements. That was removed a number of years ago, and I think it was because, again, that was also to ensure that you had quality establishments that were serving liquor, but it was just too difficult to keep up with the market and keep that current. And so it was removed in part because we had these other protections in place.
Councilmember?
I look at that every year to find out what percentage of food versus alcohol is being served in the restaurants. And it's my observation, you're certainly welcome to watch it as we go through it tonight, that those who have a higher percentage of food have a lower percentage of police calls. So I mean, I think it's a good requirement that we keep it in place. I don't think it's out, it's too out of line, and all of the ones that we're doing meet it.
A lot of other cities do it as well, but, you know, we like good restaurants here, but I don't mind a bar now and then either, but we don't want to be overrun by it.
I mean, notwithstanding Councilmember Sandal's comments, I don't think it's a bad idea in consideration of people that raised the questions with Councilmember Fitz Henry. I think we certainly could address it in a work session and get some information provided to us. So we're making a decision based on information and not just what we believe to be true.
Yeah, and maybe we could revisit and see how the ordinances are, if there's anything we want to tweak from some of the other cities that are also doing it. I know our neighboring cities do it as well. So it's kind of one of those things that most cities do, but it wouldn't be bad to go revisit and see what the language is. I mean, we've done that before because some of our stuff has been unclear and there were maybe better ways of doing it.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, there's one other thing that I could add that might explain the difference in treatment. The basis for not imposing that requirement on the clubs is because those licenses strictly under the statute, they're not allowed to serve anybody or the general public. They can only serve members and guests of members. That's why those clubs have books. People are supposed to sign in as guests when they come in. They're not to be generally open to the public. And the theory behind not imposing the similar food requirement on those organizations is that as fraternal organizations, they will exercise control over their members that you might not see in an establishment that doesn't operate under the same rules. Again, that is the theory behind it.
Okay. Yeah, okay. We know what the theories are.
Theory doesn't always translate into fact.
That's our practice. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Next council. Agenda item?
So are we on eight?
Good, yeah.
It's mine. Thank you.
Yeah, that's yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number eight on the agenda is a public hearing for the consideration of the renewal of 2013 on-sale wine and 3.2% malt liquor license for Chipotle Mexican Grill, Colorado LLC, doing business as Chipotle Mexican Grill at 7644 Lindell Avenue, South. Do we have more than one or just?
Yeah.
Are we good? Do we wish to combine all these?
I do.
Okay. So we'll also be, we'll also be considering a public hearing for the renewal of 3.2% malt liquor license for Thompson's Fireside Pizza, doing business as Fireside Pizza at 6736 Penn Avenue, South. And for 3.2% malt liquor license for Khan's Red Pepper Incorporated, doing business as Red Pepper Chinese Restaurant at 2910 West 66th Street. And for a 3.2% malt liquor license for Patrick's French Bakery, doing business as Patrick's Bakery and Cafe at 2928 West 66th Street. And for a 3.2% malt liquor license for the Noodles Shop Company of Colorado Incorporated, doing business as Noodles and Company at 7630 Lindell Avenue, South. And a 3.2% malt liquor license for John E. Powers and Associates, doing business as Lariat Lanes at 6320 Penn Avenue, South. I'm running out of wind here. And the next one, 3.2% malt liquor license for Joy's Pataya Thai Restaurant, LLC, doing business as Joy's Pataya Thai Restaurant at 7545 Lindell Avenue, South. And that is all of them. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and conduct a public hearing for the four named businesses.
Okay. Would anyone like to come forward and speak on these particular businesses and their renewal of their license? Anyone at all? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
As opposed? The public hearing is closed.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the renewal of the 2013 on-sale wine license for 3.2% malt liquor licenses. I'm going to, for the Chipotle Mexican Grill. So I don't miss any here. And for Thompson's Fireside Pizza. For Khan's Red Pepper, doing business as Red Pepper Chinese Restaurant. For Patrick's French Bakery. For the Noodles and Company. For Lariat Lanes. And I believe that's all of them.
No, Joy's Pataya.
I forgot Joy. Okay, skip to page. Joy Pataya's Thai Restaurant, doing business as Joy's Pataya Thai Restaurant, 7545 Lindell. That should be all of them.
Okay, second. And I'll second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Sandal, you have the next big long list.
Thank you. I have another batch. These are all the liquor licenses, and it's an on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses for all of the names I'm going to read shortly. And only one of them, the Frenchmans, has an optional 2:00 AM closing. I thought we had that for other ones, but that's the only one that's listed. So the first, the first one is Frenchmans. It's seeking, in addition to the on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday liquor license, also an optional 2:00 AM closing. And with the consent of the group, we'll do one hearing again. I'm going to read this for all of them. This applies to every single one of the applicants. They all have paid their required license fees. Their real estate taxes are current. They have provided proof of liquor liability insurance and workers' compensation insurance. An accountant has prepared a statement which takes into account the food and liquor sales. And I'll go through those as we hit the, hit the names. And there are no environmental staff complaints for any of the restaurants that are going to be mentioned following. For Frenchmans, their liquor, food versus liquor is the following. This is for a year's period ending September 2012. The liquor accounted for 45.7% of the sales and the food sales were 54.3%. So that's over the 50%. Their criminal contacts from the police declined. Their overall contacts increased by one. And they have not had any liquor violations for serving to underage youth since 2004. So that's a good record. The next one is Financial Guidance, Inc., doing business as Four Points by Sheridan at 7745 Lindell Avenue, South. And again, all of those same comments apply, return, they've met all of the requirements. They have an 80.7% of total sales with food and 19.3% sales with liquor. Their public contacts are not an entire year because they've had a name change and a new ownership, but they're very modest. And they have not had any on-sale or any sales to minors violations. The next one is Pizon Incorporated, doing business as Khan's Mongolian Barbecue at 500 East 78th A Street. They have met all of the requirements. Their food sales account for 94% and their liquor accounted for 6% of the sales. Their last sale to underage youth was back in 2005, so they're doing well. And they have a very modest number of contacts with the police department. And what people need to understand is the number of contacts with the police could be things such as somebody locked out of their car or it isn't necessarily violent crimes or drunkenness. They have something called assists, and since we have our police chief present, he can tell us what some of those assists are that you might be doing that aren't criminal.
Thank you. Assist can, it's kind of a broad category. It's calls that can't be pegged on to, let's say, a disturbance or maybe an alarm. A lot of our assists that we get are just our officers doing what we call extra patrol or walk-through businesses. We encourage our officers to routinely get out and get to know the bar managers or the restaurant managers. So they'll just call out and then that'll get quoted as an assist when an officer goes through. Generally, they're, well, not generally, they are non-criminal type calls. And it could range from, as you stated, a lockout to assisting somebody with just about anything else, non-criminal.
Okay, thank you. The next one we have is Wiltshire Restaurants, LLC, doing business as Hula Hands Restaurant and Bar at 6601 Lindell. They have complied with all of the requirements and they have 67.6% of total sales and 32.4% liquor. Their criminal contacts declined as well. And their last, their most recent violation for sale to underage youth was in 2001, so that's a long time ago. Next one we have is Don Pablo's Operating LLC, doing business as Don Pablo's at 980 West 78th Street. Their food sales accounted for 81.7% of total sales and liquor was 18.3%. And let's see, their last sale to minors was in 2006. So all of these businesses are doing a good job of patrolling their sales of liquor. And their criminal contacts have declined from 20 in 2011 to only 10 in 2012. So great job. Next one is Champs Operating Corporation, doing business as Champs Americana at 790 West 66th Street. And they've met all the requirements. Their sales of food were 65.12%. Liquor was 34.88%. Their last contact or sale of underage youth was in 2008. And their criminal contacts declined slightly, but their assists were up from zero to nine. So your police officers must have liked the atmosphere in Champs. So. Next one is El Tejaban, Mexico, Mexica Grill, LLC, doing business as El Tejaban, 2 West 66th Street. Food sales accounted for 85% of the total sales. 15% was sale of alcohol. And let's see, they've had no violations ever for sale to underage youth. And I think the final one is Pizza Luce, which is a new business at 800 West 66th Street in Ridgefield. They've met all the requirements. Sales accounted for 80.3% in food and 19.7% was alcohol. And they have had no violations. And with that, we can call for a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward and speak to these establishments and the renewal of their license?
Madam Mayor, just before you do that, I just want to indicate here that there are actually two establishments that are looking for the optional 2:00 AM.
I wondered about that.
Frenchmans and the other one would be Champs.
Okay, it's not listed, but that's fine. We will add that to our motion.
Yeah, it's on the motion. It's on the motion for Champs.
Is it on the motion piece?
Okay, okay.
Probably looking at the other one.
Okay.
Councilmember, make sure you get that.
Yep.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward? I'll move to close a public hearing.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion is closed. Just before you go and have to reread that, I'll give you a bit of a break. I just have a couple of questions, and this is more for the public, too. I notice in a lot of these too, we have a lot of alarm calls. And some of them are like five or six alarm calls do, and I suspect that those are not all break-ins in Ridgefield. And that, are we charging back for those false alarm calls and stuff? How are we dealing with that?
Yes. Very small percentage of alarms are actual alarms. And we do have a sliding scale fee. They're allowed two false alarms per year and then there's a fee imposed upon them beyond that. And it increases by the number of alarms. It is a problem. I think since the council instituted the fee schedule years ago, we have gotten it under control somewhat, but yeah, we do charge them.
Well, it makes them address the issues that are causing their false alarms and to train their employees.
That's correct. And that doesn't only apply to these businesses. It applies to all businesses.
It was just kind of stark in the report. The other thing that I noticed in some of the establishments, there seems to be like a jump in how many calls we might have to a particular business. So there's like those that have 10, those that have 20, and then those that have 30 or more. Do we have a, does the public safety have like a break-off point when you work with a particular establishment, if they have a number of calls?
Well, in reference to these, ones with the more calls here are usually, you know, you're going to be your champs, your Hula Hands, your more busier places. And we see no concern with any of those establishments as of right now. Prior to my becoming public safety director, I'm sure the council was well aware of the history we had down at the Jumbo. And we worked quite extensively with them. And now we have a Menards there, so we don't have that problem anymore. But if we do identify a problem, and as I said, none of these present a problem to us at this time, we would work with the management and try to curtail. And the easiest thing we do is have our officers have a presence in these establishments. And it seems to do a whole long way for controlling it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have we closed the public hearing yet? Yes, we closed the public hearing. Now you can make a motion.
Okay, I will move it then. I would like to move approval of the 2013 on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses with optional 2:00 AM closing for both Frenchmans and Champs Americana. And in addition, I would move the renewal of the 2013 on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses for Financial Guidance, doing business as Four Points by Sheridan. We have the Pizon, Inc., doing business as Mongolians Barbecue, Hula Hands, Don Pablo's, El Tejaban, and Pizza Luce.
I'll second that. Any discussion, council? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Council for Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the consideration of a resolution for the collection of a streetlight user fee. Excuse me. On September 22, 2009, the city council established a streetlight user fee to pay for the electrical costs of operating the city's streetlights. The resolution establishing the fee included the following provisions. One, the rates for the streetlight user fee will be reviewed and established annually as part of the city's budget preparation process. And two, the collection of the streetlight user fee will sunset in three years, December 31, 2012, unless council action is taken to re-initiate the fee. The use of a streetlight user fee is part of a strategy to remove the funding of essential services like streetlights from dependence on state's local government aid. Local government aid has proven to be an undependable revenue. The streetlight user fee was also discussed at the November 13, 2012 work session and at the December 4, 2012 special city council meeting. Currently, the streetlight user fee generates $269,154 a year in revenue. This amount is used to pay for XL energy charges for the street lighting system, which is shown in budget line item 10610-6207. Below, a history of the charges is as follows. Below, a history of the charges is as follows. 2009 XL charges were $276,595. 2010, $265,947. 2011, $298,414. 2012, $299,320 as a revised charge. And 2013, $299,320. And that's the proposed charges. Proposed rates, the current residential rate is $5.19 a quarter, which has remained unchanged since 2009. Below are the proposed rates and how much revenue they would generate. The proposed rate at $5.19, $5.19 a quarter would generate $269,154 and that would represent a zero percent increase. A $5, excuse me, a $5.30 rate would generate $274,858, representing 2.1% increase. And a proposed rate of $5.77 would generate $299,320 and represent 11.2% increase. The attached resolution re-initiating the streetlight user fee shows a recommended rate of $5.77. This amount does not account for the rate increases being proposed by XL Energy. Staff is not confident of the timing of the increase and what the impact would be to the streetlight system. The change will also be part of the proposed 13 budget. So at this time, I would move to approve the resolution allowing the city of Richfield to re-initiate and collect a streetlight user fee. And I would additionally recommend that we set the rate at $5.77 as recommended by staff.
Second.
Any other further discussion? Counsel, I mean, city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I just want to make sure that the folks out there know that one of the things that we're facing is something they're going to be facing individually as well. And that is that XL is looking to get a, they're asking for, I believe, about a 10% increase from the Public Utilities Commission. And that's, I think that's going before the Public Utilities Commission fairly soon. And then what the PUC will do is grant a temporary rate increase of some kind. I don't know what that will be myself, but probably will be, I'm going to just guess, if they're asking for 10, they'll probably maybe give them seven, maybe eight percent, I don't know. But what was explained to me by XL Energy is they have a lot of capital infrastructure, their various power plants that are in need of capital improvement and maintenance and repair. And that's why they're seeking that increase. So I think folks at home ought to be aware that they're probably going to be looking at a pretty good-sized increase in their electric bill.
All right, any other discussion? Those in favor signify by aye.
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 The next item is consideration of resolutions approving the 2012 Revised 2013 Proposed Budget and Tax Levy and the adoption of the 2013 Management, General Services, and Specialized Salary Compensation Plan. On September 11th, 2012, the city council approved and certified a preliminary tax levy of $17,744,951 to Hennepin County. The final tax levy must now be considered and approved by the city council. The final levy may be less but cannot be greater than the preliminary levy amount. Taxpayers have received individual partial specified tax notices in anticipation of the truth and taxation hearing. The city of Richfield has conducted and closed its 2012 Truth and Taxation Hearing on December 4th, 2012. During the course of the public hearing, there was an opportunity for testimony from the general public. Information was also presented by the staff regarding the proposed levy, the budget. No official city council action to act on the levy was permissible on that day on the public hearing. Since the initial publication of the 2013 City of Richfield Proposed Budget document, there have been no significant changes. The original 2013 General Fund budget approved by the city council in September was increased by $27,360 to offset the planned increase in property maintenance program. This included for the consideration of salary increases for non-represented employee pay plans. The proposed 2% increase for the management and general services pay plans effective the first full period of January 2013 reflects the same increase already negotiated with three of the city's five bargaining units. It is also comparable to other bargaining groups in the similar metro cities. A survey of the Stanton Five Cities indicates that those cities are providing anywhere from a 1% to 3% increase. The city has a long history of trying to remain as close to the mid-range as possible for Stanton Five Cities in terms of wages and benefits. A 1% salary increase for the specialized pay plan effective the first full pay period of January 2013 is based on a review of wages paid in the metro area for similar positions, including in this plan, such as recreation attendants, lifeguards, licensing clerks, and liquor sales associates. Policy questions, a revised 2012 budget and a final 2013 budget and tax levy must be adopted on or before December 28th, 2012. And I think that covers everything that we need to. So I will make an emotion to adopt the resolutions approving the 2012 Revised 2013 Proposed Budget and Tax Levy and the resolutions designating a 2% salary increase effective the first full pay period of January 2013 for the management and general services compensation plans and a 1% salary increase for the specialized compensation plan.
Second.
Is there other council discussion? We reviewed this pretty well at the last study session and at several other meetings. So you can look at those things up online if you want to get more information on that. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Those opposed, the motion carries. And at this time, let me go back to the beginning of my agenda. I believe that Public Works Director is going to make a presentation. At this time?
Well, Madam Mayor, did you want to do claims and payroll?
We can do, we can do city manager's report as well, do we want to? City manager?
That's okay, no problem. With city manager report, I would simply say that I will be contacting everyone, council members, including council member-elect. Because we're going to set up a meeting with our legislative representatives and county commissioner and sometime in the very near future. Yeah, Matt Council Rep, those folks, yeah, right. Yep. So we'll be trying to get dates to get that coordinated. I'd like to do it, I'd like to do it somewhere in the, at the latest, before the end of January, before things get really hot and heavy at the legislature.
Okay, we should be getting to those dates.
Right, and to that end, we'll be looking at some of the things that we consider to be the highest legislative priorities for City of Richfield from staff perspective. But at the same time, I would ask you to email me or give me a call and tell me what you think are critical issues that we should be looking at as our key objectives. I know there's some things that I think we can all agree on. We need help to get started on the tunnel under Trunk Highway 77. I think that's a big priority. I think we need help in extending the Tiff District at Cedar Point to be able to help us with development. I think we need help in protecting the cities like Richfield for many changes regarding fiscal disparities. And another issue is local government aid. And a letter that appeared in the Star Tribune that was authored by yourself and the mayor of Bemidji, representing, I think, wasn't it Bemidji, I think, or?
Yes, it was Bemidji.
That represents, that represents both greater Minnesota cities and metro cities, talking about the importance of, again, having a reliable type of local government aid that when you get certified, a certified local government aid statement that recognizes the needs of cities, that you can count on that. And that the state recognizes that they have to be a partner with us in providing the day-to-day services that every city delivers to their residents. So those are some of the main things that I see, but there, you know, there's others. But at the same time, if you would just take some time to think about it and.
And the noise, I think we need to at least stress the issues of the RNEV system and what the future of the airport holds just so that it's in their radar, how impacted Richfield is.
Right.
I think Tom can speak to that pretty.
Yeah, for certain, right. That's, yeah, that's a whole other topic. I know Pam Demetranko and I authored a letter that we sent in to the Star Tribune as a commentary on what happened to Richfield and that. They chose not to print it.
Yeah.
But.
That was unfortunate.
That's unfortunate, but that's just the way it is. So.
We'll send it to the patch.
Yeah, I have to take a look. I think once you submit a letter to Star Tribune, whether they, they say that once it's submitted to them, you can't submit the same letter to another, but they didn't print it, so I don't think it really matters. I don't know, we'll take a look at that. Actually, I thought it was a well-written letter.
And now we're also going to be looking at a goal-setting session. Did you have kind of a timeframe after the council member? Are we looking at like March or February or what are we looking for?
Well, here's, yeah, here's the issue. With regard to goal-setting, one of the problems has been a little bit vexing for us is the system that we use as part of the distinguished budget award process means that the government finance officers organization reviews our budget and makes sure that all of our council goals are closely tied in with our budget. Well, it makes it difficult when the council gets the goals in January and puts them out for the next, you know, for the next year. And then we're working on goals in, you know, for that next year period in March, when we start, well, April, when we start the budget. Everything needs to be submitted to me by June, which would include goals for the next year. Well, the council hasn't even talked about those yet. So I'd like to get on the same schedule. And maybe to that end, what we could do this year is have more of a brief goal-setting sometime in January to talk about what we see and then have another goal-setting. It would only be one year that we'd have to do two of them, but have another big goal-setting in maybe March-April timeframe so that we could coordinate that with the budget. And some of that might simply be just reflecting on what we talked about in January or, you know, maybe some other issues that come up.
Well, and I think though, some of the goal-setting that we do is not necessarily just year by year.
No, some of it's.
A lot of this is very long-term program and planning.
And again, with the budget, that program looks very closely at your annual budget goals along with your budget. So I want to make sure that we keep on getting that award. I think it's important for us to, you know, to maintain that award. It's part of our financial strength when we're looked at by bonding agencies, so.
Okay, I think we're all in agreement, we can probably figure out how to do that.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea. It's not a bad idea for annual goals.
Yeah. So that's all I have.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else?
I'll move claims and payroll.
One second. Any other discussion on claims and payroll? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Claims and payroll passes. We are going to go into a special city council closed meeting, but I believe that we had Director of Public Works is going to say a couple of things before we do that. And I'll.
Sure, I can make a couple of comments. Corrine, do you want to give the instructions before I kind of go through this or would you rather wait till after?
Excuse me, after.
Okay. We're going to be talking in the closed session about some offers that we had on some property for 17th Avenue. And with a closed session, the discussion needs to be narrow on that particular topic. And we shouldn't wander off and have a policy discussion about some new, some new ideas perhaps for some policy direction. So what I'd like to do is introduce some policy discussion before this so that they have that in mind as we go into the meeting. And that is, that can be, and has to be a public discussion. And so what I'd like to do is kind of bring you back to when we first talked about doing this project and we said we were going to have a resident-initiated special assessment project and we'd find out the level of interest given the offers that they have for the property. And then we said at that time we could decide to move forward or not. And I'd like to, and I think what I'd like to do is talk about some options that are something other than go forward or do nothing. And there's some ground in the middle that I'd like to discuss. So if we could look at the overhead that I have here, are you able to see that? Yeah, here we go. So what are the Richfield Parkway options for moving forward if we wanted to have that? I think we talked about we could do nothing. We could decide not to move forward. That's an option. We could cancel the project until the redevelopment occurs. The other option that we talked about is go with the full build. We'd proceed with the project that we are convinced that we, the pieces are in place and we want to proceed. And I suppose an option would be that we could condemn if there was a holdout or something. We could condemn, we'd have to, in order to move forward, to do the whole project, we'd need to condemn if there was a holdout. And we'll discuss this later. I'd like to also talk about that there's a partial build option, which, if you remember the project, one of the reasons we wanted to proceed is that if, when we were going to do that small portion of Richfield Parkway between Bloomington Avenue and 17th Avenue, that it would be convenient that while you're doing, tearing up the road there and do the other section at the same time, instead of doing them one at a time, you know, do a half a project one year and half the next. And so this would open up, if we were to proceed with the project now, we could time it and do it at the same time as that other connection. So we could do, but we could do that with a road-only connection. If we, the road-only portion of this does not extend up and interrupt into the properties there. So it's possible to build the road only by the majority of the properties, go with a road-only project and kind of stage the construction and construct 65th Street, the road portion, in stage one. And then at some time in the future, complete the streetscape and the pathwork in the future. It could be done at the same time that a phase-two redevelopment takes place or it could be some other time that in conjunction with some other work with the bikeway. The Three Rivers Park District right now would not be constructing their portion of that pathway on either end, you know, until sometime in the future. So we would, this piece would be done ahead of time. And so for, there are reasons why we may want to wait. And I wanted to get this option on, which is really a policy decision or discussion, and say, have that option, you know, and make sure that the council was aware of that and that we've had this discussion. And that may be part of the discussion as we talk about some of the settlements.
I have a question. If we did, if we looked at the policy question of a partial build and we had, we just did a road, would we still have to do easements for people's front yards?
We could, we could get easements for front yards in anticipation of the entire project. If for one, some reason, we don't either want to either go in and purchase that or perhaps suppose the situation was where we actually had the settlement, the person wanted to stay in the house however for a period of time, there would be a way for us then to build the road, leave a house if they wanted to stay in place. And this really addresses the concern of the Hurleys earlier in the meeting. When they approached, they are saying that they would be interested in staying in the house if that was available to them. And we wanted to make sure that the council was aware of the ramp, that that's a possibility and what the upsides and downsides of that would be.
But then other residents could choose to go ahead and.
The other residents could choose to move forward.
And if we looked at the timing, when would the move and timing be?
The, well, if we were to, for the majority of, for those that wanted to go and there are those that are anxious to go, that would be this year or next year, this construction season. So we could begin the work next construction season. So if all but one or all but a small number of them wanted to go, they, we would have the settlement, get the property, build the road and perhaps build, and then not build the stuff behind the curb, the pathway and the other streetscape portions of the project.
And so that would mean that they wouldn't necessarily be moving people out in the winter?
No, the timing of the move then would be up to whatever is decided in the purchase agreement.
Okay.
Counselor member?
I have to admit that this is one of those situations that we've talked about over the last four years since I've been on the council where we're being, I'm being presented with what now is called a policy decision. We're going to go into closed session to talk about purchase agreements. We can't talk about it there. So now it's the first I've heard about a partial build and other options. This is one of the things that concerned both council member Rogie and myself because we're going to be asked to go in and talk about offers. We're now, we're talking, we're given another option that we have to talk. And I'm welcoming the talk in the public forum. But I hadn't heard anything about this till I sat down here tonight until you walked up to the podium.
Right.
That's one of the things that we've been trying to address for the last four years. All of a sudden, we'll be asked to make a decision on something we, I hadn't even heard about till tonight. And this is prior to going in and going into closed session to discuss the purchase offers. Do you understand the discomfort I have in being asked to make decisions with absolutely no information other than what's before me and a little, you know, a little PowerPoint?
Right. Council member, Madam Mayor, this option did not get explored by staff until we were presented with some of the situations that arose as part of the discussions with the homeowners.
Right, problems. And this is the first we've heard about.
Right, when those problems presented themselves, we tried to figure what are, what options are available to us. We don't need to do this option and we're not, we're just saying that we, given the state of the negotiations, the council may want to consider this or not. And we're just saying there, and there may be other options other than these three that we've got. And if there's.
Would you agree with me, it would be only rational to take a little bit of time to weigh that other option rather than to try to make a decision on it this evening?
Absolutely, and in fact, we're not necessarily looking for a decision. Absolutely. And in fact, we're not necessarily looking for a decision tonight. We are, we are going into closed session to, to get guidance on this and tell you the status of the situation right now. Negotiations are continuing. But, but if we could get some guidance, it would help us in our further, further deliberations with the, the property owners.
Well, from my perspective, and I won't speak for anybody else because I obviously can't, but, but to get guidance when I don't even understand, number one, what the problem is, is we're sitting here now. I may understand it better when we go into closed session.
Right.
But, but still, so I've got 15, 20 minutes to weigh the options and determine whether or not I think that I should give some indication that this is a good way to go, in 20 minutes or a half hour of deliberation?
There would be, Madam Mayor, members of the council, certainly there would be no decision. What we would do is come back and we'd have, given the information that you have, and we haven't been able to discuss with you because of the nature of the, of the, of the offers, you'll have now all the information that we have, as well as the options. And we'll come back to you sometime after the first of the year. And we're going to bring, bring back to you a, a situation, or the options available to you, including moving forward, staying as we are, or some partial option that you may want to choose.
So, this is just a caveat. This is not...
That's right. This is, this is something that, wouldn't be fair to bring up just in a closed session.
Well, but once again, you, you've indicated that you're going to be looking for guidance from us based on what limited information we've got, whatever we get in the back room.
Right. Yep. And if I could just say, when, when this, when this issue came up the first time, we went to the council, we didn't know what response we were going to get from the homeowners at that time. We now have a good sense of, of that reaction.
My recollection is, we discussed, what if, what if there is, wasn't unanimity, and, and what direction did we go, and what were we going to do? So, so it wasn't something that was unforeseen.
Right.
We just, we just didn't think we were going to run into the, apparently the conflicts that we've run into.
I'm for, if Mike has provided us with the information he has, I would just soon adjourn and let's hear what's going on.
Yeah. And then, you know, and, and again, we'll, I think we could say that we want to hear about everything if we come back to gather this information so we have time to talk about it. That would give another study session and some more time for all of us to look at what our options are.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Question, Madam Mayor. The Hurleys had asked earlier a thing to speak. When will they have a chance?
They would ask to speak after we came back from the closed session, did they not? They wanted us to...
I just want to make sure we didn't forget you.
No, I didn't forget you. I've got your card right up here. And so, we'll go into closed session if you'll, you'll sit around and...
Madam, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I just want to clarify both for the council and also for people who might be sitting and waiting for you to come out of the meeting. It was the intention of staff that there will not be any council action or discussion once you come back into the council chambers. The only purpose of the meeting is for the council to provide you with information regarding the discussions that have occurred with the owners, to get direction regarding further negotiation. We're not asking for the council to come back out and, and approve purchase agreements or make any public statement. It's to provide direction to staff regarding offers and counteroffers. And there, and so, we would expect, once that closed session reconvenes to the public, the only thing that will happen is adjournment. There won't be any further discussion.
But the Hurleys can come still, because we have open forum at the end of meetings as well.
Or, Madam Mayor, you could let them speak now, so that you could hear what they have to say.
What I'm, what I'm saying, yeah. I guess the, the point of my saying that is, if their expectation was that you were going to come out and make some kind of decision or take some action, that's not going to happen. So, there's no point in waiting. They should just speak now, let you know what they have to say, and then everybody can go home, rather than sit around and wait for us to get done.
Mr. Hurley?
Madam Mayor, council, maybe you've read in the paper about our area over there, where it was all rundown. Everything in it was in disarray. I have quite a few pictures here that I'm happy to let you all look at that at your council meeting, or your, your discussion. And you all are very welcome to come over to my home and look it over. It's very, in excellent shape, and we hope to maintain it in excellent shape. And my daughter said, we have lived there for 60 years, my wife and I. I don't know how many people in the neighborhood want to move out, and that is their prerogative. But myself, I'm willing to stay, and certainly as long as there's a possibility of it being a prolonged progress, where it would not happen right away. Would you care to have the pictures of my home and all to take back to your chambers and look at them?
Well, we can look at them here. That would be very nice. Thank you for bringing them. Actually, I know your home. It's very nice, Mr. Hurley.
All right. No, that's sufficient, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think we'll all recognize the house.
A lot of the pictures are in the back of it, too.
Okay. Oh, so the gardens and stuff.
Oh, I might say.
Yeah, okay.
That we'd never sell our home for the price that they have quoted us.
Yeah, I know the market has hurt, hurt all of us. The market has hurt all of us.
That's right.
That's right. I agree. Thank you. Do you want to give us instructions for the...
Yeah. Madam Mayor and members of the council, we are recommending that the council go into a closed session. The statute, open meeting law allows the council to go into a closed session to develop or consider offers or counteroffers for the purchase or sale of real property. It is a requirement that before going into closed session, the council has to identify on the record the particular real or personal property that's the subject of the closed meeting. Those properties are 6314 Seventeenth Avenue, 6320 Seventeenth Avenue, 6326 Seventeenth Avenue, 6332 Seventeenth Avenue, 6338 Seventeenth Avenue, 6344 Seventeenth Avenue, 6408 Seventeenth Avenue, 6414 Seventeenth Avenue, 6426 Seventeenth Avenue, 6432 Seventeenth Avenue, 6438 Seventeenth Avenue, and 6444 Seventeenth Avenue. The council will not be making any final decisions during the meeting. If at some point, a agreement is reached with any one or more of the property owners, that purchase agreement will have to be approved during a public meeting. And I think we're now ready to go into closed session.
Okay. We will reconvene. Yeah, that's very nice. Thank you for bringing them. Which room are we going to? Sure.
... Alright, so I'll go get candy.
Yeah, good, good. Okay.
Still there?
Yeah, I think we just wore one last little bit.
That's it?
I don't know, maybe they're still on.
Mm-hmm.
...
So are you wrapped on the holidays? Is everybody coming home?
Um, no, actually not. God can't use masks.
Yes, I'd like to re-convene the regular city council meeting from the council chambers. And is there any other discussion or any other business?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Have a very nice holiday. Merry Christmas.